Hello. I'd like to welcome all of you to this edition of Plymouth Profiles. Plymouth Profiles is an opportunity to meet and have a conversation with people from the Plymouth community. And today, I'm delighted to have our current Chair of the Plymouth School Committee, Michelle Badger. Michelle, welcome.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for being here, Michelle. Now, I happen to know that you grew up in Plymouth, but tell us a little bit about your background.
Yeah, I grew up in Plymouth. I went through the public schools. I didn't go to kindergarten here, but first, senior year, graduated from Plymouth South High School, played field hockey and track for all four years. And after that, went to Sweetbrier College in Virginia and played field hockey for them as well, majored in history and international affairs. And actually, lived there for a little bit before coming back up here in 2008 for grad school and have dual master's degrees in public administration and political science from Suffolk University.
Good.
Yeah.
And tell us a little bit about your current role on the Plymouth School Committee. How long you been serving?
I've been on the school committee for 13 years and it has been just a wonderful experience for me. I've enjoyed getting to know so many members of our community and really making a difference for the students of Plymouth, for the staff of Plymouth, the teachers, everybody. Because I really, for me, it was, it's always about giving back and how can we make someone else's life better or easier than ours? I mean, I was a student that struggled in reading and in different areas when I was in elementary school and always had to work extra hard and for things that I wanted to try to get to, homework took me longer than most. And so for me, I wanted to make sure, wanted to run, what, 2011? I made the decision to run because I wanted to help someone else struggle a little less than me.
So people that may not be totally familiar with Plymouth Town Government, where does the Plymouth School Committee fit in with other boards and committees?
Yeah, so we're like the legislative branch along, yeah, we're the executive branch, sorry, not the legislative branch, that's town meeting, along with the select board. So we are at the same level. We are just, our portion is school budget and everything that has to do with the Plymouth Schools, the buildings, the supplies, the teachers, the students, everything that goes towards the educational side of our community.
And how many members?
We have seven members and everyone serves three-year terms and I think there's two, two and three. That's kind of how the process is.
And tell us a little bit about your committee. Who's on the committee?
You know, we've got, so our Vice Chair is Luis Pisano. We've got our Secretary is Catherine Jackson. Then we've got Venna Haywood, Bob Morgan, Ashley Shaw's our newest member, Dr. Sorenson is probably our longest-serving member. And then we also have, oh, and then myself. So that is, that would be the seven.
And you're currently the Chair.
And I am currently the Chair, which has been really just an honor. And what we've been doing in the last couple of years now that we've kind of come out of COVID, I mean, it's still there, don't get me wrong, it's still having impacts on our education, it's still having impacts on our students and it's still, you know, making people sick and having to take time off. But since COVID, we've really tried to pivot and be a little bit more of a, not an activist school committee, but a more active school committee. So like, how do we do things on that state level that might be able to change and help not just Plymouth but others? Or just help Plymouth? You know, we need to, we need more help with our educational funding. And so we've got an advocacy group that myself, Catherine and Luis are on, we've got a legislative connector, connection liaison. And then we have our other subcommittees. Because I don't think, when most people look at, you know, school committee, you think, all right, they meet twice a month and that's it. No, that's not the case. We attend events, we are on multiple committees within the schools and on the town side as well, you know, building committee, we've got a member on the master planning, we've got, and then we also have our school liaisons. Every member has, I believe, I have two, but I think every other member has at least three schools that they are liaisons to. So go to their events, if there's something they need, they can contact you or, you know, their school council, which I always like to put a plug in for the schools because we always need members for the school councils. And that can be, you don't have to be a parent in the school, you can be a community member, they need students on those. It's just a nice way to learn what's going on in your school and impact the, have a part of the budget discussion too, is what the school councils do. And they never have enough people on them. So love as many people to get involved in that way as possible.
So Michelle, I know you know, but I did serve on the Plymouth School Committee in the eighties.
Yep.
And at that time, I did also serve as Chair. And one of the things that I remember from that is just the time commitment. It is really an amazing time commitment because as you said, in addition to the school committee meetings, in addition to these other groups in which you're involved, whether it's a liaison, the advocacy, but also just going to all the events, to graduations or school fairs or, you know, other performance things. And how have you been able to deal with that over the years?
You know, I, I mean, I make it a priority because I know, you know, you go to these meetings and you talk about policy and you go to all this, but when you really see your work in action is when you get to go to the events. When you see, I mean, if you, six was incredible. Every single time I see a show that our students are a part of, an athletic event or, you know, a programming in our school, I am just always blown away by the work that our teachers and our students put in and the incredible talent and the time. And so for me, that's when you kind of, I have a friend who works in college admissions and she always calls graduation her payday. And so for me, it kind of is like that at those events because you get to see the students thriving and if it's a math night or if it's a reading night or if it's a graduation or a scholarship night, whatever it is, you're really seeing that what you've been doing has really made an impact on somebody's life. And, you know, obviously I have work as well and the other commitments that are outside of school committee that I have, but it's really, I've always tried to make it a priority to make as many things as I can because I think it's important to be out there. And as we talked about a little bit earlier, it's important to have those conversations with people in the community who may not be coming to school committee meetings, may not be as involved because they're busy raising their kids, they're busy taking them to soccer, they're busy working. And so these are the places that we, you know, see people we might not otherwise see.
And you talked about what you're doing currently, serving on the school committee, but in all the years you've been there, tell us some of the other subcommittees or things in which you've been involved.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I've been on the policy committee years ago, been part of advocacy, as I said. And one of the big things, since I got on the school committee, I've been kind of just amazed at the transportation costs that we pay. This year alone, our transportation part of our budget is $11 million. That's a lot of money. That's a lot of teachers, that's a lot of additional things that we could do. And so one of the things I've been doing forever, it feels like, is working with Mamor Torey and Kathleen Attra, our state reps in Plymouth, to see how we can potentially get some funding from the state to help us with our, with the substantial cost because we have such a large town, 100 square miles. I mean, that's not typical, that is not your typical community with busing. And so we've initially tried to do only what would impact just Plymouth. Let's see if the state will look at us like a regional and say, okay, we'll give you money because you're bigger than a lot of our regional schools. That, that didn't work out. And we did that several years in a row, trying to get that kind of passed in a budget amendment at the state level. And then we tried to include some other towns. And in the last year and a half, we've come up, I think year and a half, we've come up with a really, we were sitting around a table and at one point you just start thinking, are we ever going to find a solution to this problem? Or issue, not a problem, but, and Dr. Campbell was like, what if we did something along the lines of a circuit breaker for transportation? And so we've been having conversations with Department of Elementary and Secondary Education about how we might be able to do that. We've put forward a resolution for the Massachusetts Association of School Committees Conference to hopefully they'll back that. And then we've also been working in recent years, the mini buses or the little vans that you see going around, those pay for, those take our students who are out of district to out of district placements, our homeless students, students who are being, going to a certain school with a different program, out of district or in district. And that can cost us between $250 and $800 a student per day. So that, I think, that's another element that we on the school committee have been working to see if there's something we can do on the state level to maybe do a formula of some sort. Because we can't handle the growth and, I mean, we, we do the growth in our transportation budget, but that has been a huge thing for us in Plymouth. I think, and if we hadn't signed our transportation budget when we did, we wouldn't have been able, we wouldn't be in the situation we were. There are schools that didn't, that signed theirs after the pandemic and they are paying triple the cost for transportation. And we're lucky that we did it ahead of time, but we can be in that same place really soon. And so we've been looking at ways that we as a district might be able to take over that, some of internal busing and they've done some of that. I'm trying to think what else we've been doing. We've been, you know, we started, one of the things I did was make sure we had a liaison for our CPAC. So that's our Special Education Parent Advisory Council Committee, Council. And we, for me, when I first got on, I didn't realize that there was no liaison there, but we have liaisons to all the schools. And so we now have two school committee members that sit on that committee and up until this past year, I was, I was their liaison. Just important to make sure that we have dialogue between what's happening, we can understand on our side as school committee members, what's happening in the special education part of our community. And I know recently, about, I think, two years ago, we started a English Language Learner Parent PAC. So, you know, just things that are needed in our community. When I first got on the committee, we didn't have the translation services. And I remember talking to Dr. Myastis and just being like, we need more than just this one piece of paper that says your child at the school translated. They need to be able to know what's happening in the classroom. And so now we have so many more services for our students. So there's been a lot of different things we can get into and I could probably go on for days about environment or the energy efficient things that we've done, but I won't bore people.
Well, so Michelle, you mentioned Dr. Campbell. Tell us a little bit about the relationship between the school committee and the staff.
Yeah, I think we have a really great relationship. I think we're really lucky. We have a great reputation, great relationship, not a reputation, with our, our staff, with the, within all the unions. We've, you know, we've, I think they know that we're on their side, the teachers and the rest of our staff know we're on their side and we understand, you know, let's look at our last budget cycle here. We had, we were presented with a budget that didn't quite cover what we needed and we're in, we were in union negotiations, right, contract negotiations. This is our cycle. So they came to our meeting and they, they had their voice heard, they shared and we heard and we, we knew, we've known for a while that our teachers and many members of our staff are underpaid. And we continually, with every, underpaid for the area, I should say, we've seen teachers leave, not because they didn't enjoy Plymouth, but they just couldn't afford it anymore. You know, they're working two or three jobs and nobody should have to work two or three jobs. When you have a full-time job like a teacher, I mean, teachers are the base of our entire society. We don't have doctors, we don't have lawyers, we don't have anybody without a teacher, right? So, so we as a committee really do believe fully and support our staff, teachers, paras, everybody. And so they, they know we're there for them and we have a really good relationship with them. We have liaisons at each of the schools, which I think helps too, and people get their, have their voices heard, they send us an email. I know you send me an email, you get an email back, usually within 48 hours, but sometimes it takes a little longer, but, and a phone call if you need a phone call. Because I just think it's really important that we have those conversations, but that go in the right direction. So like, if somebody reaches out to us, that it should maybe be at the school level, well, let's keep it at the school level, but let me, let me know what's happening. Let's divide that back. So I really think that our staff and our teachers really respect us because we respect them and we respect all the work that they do.
So you talked a little bit earlier about part of the budget, but just now overall, I mean, each year, the school committee basically receives a recommendation from the superintendent and then they end up taking it on themselves.
Yep.
And comes to town meeting where I am.
Yeah.
And I know it's a large part of the overall budget for the town. So tell to us a little bit about how big the budget is and when do you start building it?
I mean, the budget, in fact, we're actually changing how we've been handling the budget after some of the discussions we had over our last budget cycle. So this will be the first year that we have a budget subcommittee and we're really excited about that. I think it's kind of crazy that we didn't have one before, but we did have some conversations with the town, with the Chair and the Vice Chair, we're usually part of that conversation. And our first meeting is happening, I think, next week. So usually middle of September is when we have our first conversation about what the town is projecting for our budgets for whatever the next fiscal year. So FY '26, we'll talk about it, I think, next week. And they'll tell us what they think we have and how we need to be kind of budgeting and planning. And from that point, go back and we have, we have our budget department, we've got Dr. Blaisdell who does, who puts together that budget, who helps and works with each of the schools because all the principals put together their own budgets, our, our directors and managers of different programs put together their own budget. And then it all comes back and it goes back to Adam and Adam does the work of going through and putting it all together and seeing what we can afford versus what they want, you know? And then it'll come, we'll have a budget subcommittee now who will meet with Adam and talk about that. And then from that point, we, it comes to us in the school committee in December and we have two meetings about it. The first one is just a full-on review of what's happening, what it looks like. And then the second one is when we, we vote, we can continue to ask questions and there's always opportunity. And as part of that, we have the education subcommittee of the finance and advisory committee who come, who, who are part of that, that meeting. And then we usually have a meeting with the select board as well to go over our budget. And from there, it goes to town meeting and during that entire process, we're meeting at each of the caucuses and trying to answer questions that we can. And, you know, sometimes there, there are questions you expect and sometimes there are not questions that you expect, it all related to the budget. But that's kind of the, the way it has unfolded, we're 119, right around 119 million right now. And it's a lot of money, but it's, we could use more. Every year, the supplies and material budget line, I do this because it's in a, in my head, it's the graphic, it's a pie chart and it just gets smaller and smaller and there's less that we can pull from and we can take away to supplement our other programs. As prices get higher and higher and we're going to need more and more funding and to be able to provide that base level of education for our students. And we do a really good job in Plymouth. I think we're very lucky that in our special education, we have, we have good staffing levels and staffing levels across the board. We have a fantastic VPA, Visual and Performing Arts, just our regular academic, we had, what, three teachers who are nationally recognized or state recognized last year. And one, we have a blue ribbon school, you know, so we've, we have a great school system. It's just we need, it's a lot of money for, like I said, the millets that we have and the number of schools we have.
I remember when I served on the school committee that a budget buster often was special needs because of mandated services under Chapter 766. Does that continue to be a large part of the budget?
Yeah, I mean, we had a couple of years back, there was, I think it was two years ago, there was a 14% increase in out of district special education placements that could have really crippled some of our budgets and around the state. And so we worked with the state to try to get additional monies off of that, but special education is always going to be a lot of money. But again, there's no blame on any student or, we need, we need to and we want to educate those students. We want them to have their fullest potential that they're capable of. And so it's, it is a budget driver, but there's so many other budget drivers too. You know, the unfunded mandates, I mean, if you look at that list when we post it usually around the budget time, it is just, you just can keep scrolling and scrolling for days on that Excel spreadsheet with what, how many unfunded mandates we have in our, in our state for.
So I remember our school committee was at a time when Plymouth was really growing and so class size was really tugging at us in terms of how small do you keep the classes? And if you try to keep them small, what programs might be affected? So what's happening right now with class size in Plymouth schools?
So class sizes, we are committed to keep our class sizes relatively small. We, there's no 30 member, there shouldn't be 30 people in a classroom. I think, I feel like the average is like, I'm going to get it wrong and Dr. Campbell's probably going to yell at me, but I think it's like 20 to 25 students, maybe 25 students in a class is where we try to keep the average class size at. But we, we, obviously our population isn't increasing like it was. We do have increases in certain grade levels and it depends on the year what's happening. But we are definitely, we have, we've brought in a lot of the out of district special education placements that we may have sent out in years past. In the last 10 years or so, we've been bringing those programs internally. And so we've, we have, we have needs for spaces and some buildings that you might not think we would because we have an ASD program over here and they need this space for these students. Or we have the care program over here. And so while our population isn't increasing by a lot, the cost of education has gone up a lot.
When I served, it was actually, now that I think about it, there was the Plymouth School Committee that was the elementary school committee. And then the regional school committee was like, so I was really focused on elementary education. But again, I remember that when we were trying to have small classes, sometimes we'd get recommendations from administration saying, well, maybe you have to cut art, maybe you have to cut music, maybe you have to cut phys ed. And of course, we didn't want to do that. How do you, how do you respond to that?
Yeah, we've made commitments because we really, we believe in the whole student in Plymouth, it's that whole child. It's the, it's not just the academics that are gonna, they have to find their passion somewhere and what is that? You know, you expose them to music, you expose them to art, you're exposing them to gym class, there's, like, we also have health education now, which, which is, I pushed for, for a bunch of years, probably three years before we really got it to, to the level it is at the elementary school, to, because we needed to revamp our health education curriculum. Hadn't been touched in a really long time. And now, I think we started in 2019 is when we started to revamp that. And so we've made the commitment that it's not just about the traditional math, science, reading, you know, writing, arithmetic, that piece. It's about helping these students find what they're passionate about. And so it has stayed for us, it's, we haven't, knock on wood, had to cut anything like that that we have math and we, I mean, we have art and we have music. And we've been really lucky that town meeting has supported us in those. What, a few years back, maybe five or six years ago now, we got new band uniforms, maybe even more, because they hadn't had new band uniforms since, I think, Ms. Hunt, I mean, Ms. Avery who was on the committee, she wore them and that, she went to school when you were on the school committee. So that was a while, a while back. And so we finally got those and I think.
That was a long time ago.
It was a long time ago. But she, she had worn those same uniforms. And so thankfully, town meeting said, okay, we need new uniforms. And they continue to cycle through. And we've, I think people are seeing the programs, the robotic programs, the, the Vote Tech programs that we have, they're just absolutely incredible. And what I love most about our Vote Tech programs now, and I wish it was that way when I was a student, is that every student, although it is hard to get into, every student has the capabilities and the ability to get into one of those programs or to be part of that program. When I was a student, you were either, okay, I'm going to go to college or I'm going to go tech. There was no, there was no kind of mixing of the two. And I just, I would have loved to probably have done something when I was in school. And so it's so nice to see and every year when they have the, the tech expo at the end of the year, talking to the students and, you know, some of them are going to be carpenters and some of them are going to be engineers, but others, not engineers, are going to be electricians. But then some are going to take their facilities management and go to another school and become an engineer or something else. So it's really fun to see them, you know, start building on something that they're passionate about, that they're able to find at the schools and then go off to college or go into the workplace. I really enjoy that.
So I'm aware that at the high school levels, certain students, if they wish, could take AP classes.
Yes.
So at the elementary level, is there any type of enrichment for students that might be advanced? I know that when I was in school committee, we introduced a gifted and talented program, which only lasted for a few years because again, with the challenges of the budget, they weren't always able to continue that. But are there any type of programs to meet the needs of students that might want some additional enrichment?
Yeah, I think that throughout the Plymouth Schools, one of the things that have been in the last, I don't know, since I've been on the committee, probably 10 years or so since, has been about rigor. So it's rigor at every level, what do these students need? And so our teachers are amazing, I don't know how they do it, but, you know, they're able to take that third grade classroom and there are students who are above their grade level and there are students who are below their grade level and work with all of them and say, all right, here's your reading group, here's your math group, here's, this is how, you know, the special, not special, but like a specific kind of student work group so that the students get what they need, where they're met. There's, as far as I'm aware, there's no gifted and talented program like there was when I was a student. I was not a member of the gifted and talent program, I'll say that. But they, so they're able to find that and there's more enrichment after school too now than there ever was at that elementary level. You know, we've got the robotics program, we've got, there's so many different kind of programs. And then in our high school, we have like math, math teams and things like that. And so there's, there's ways for students to find what they, they like and our teachers do an amazing job reaching all of our students.
Every year since I'm no longer on the school committee, I still go into the schools, usually at the holidays, to be with the students at the Indian Brook First Grade where my daughter teaches. And it's just always amazed me what the children, what the teachers and the administrators can do with what they have with all those students. And I'd like to ask you, teachers and administrators, what are you able to do in these times when there are limits on the budget? Can you keep the teachers that you have? Have you been having to lay some off? You know, what, where is Plymouth in all the hiring of teachers?
Yeah, so in the last, I want to say three years, I think we have, or last year, it was 30, 37 positions that were eliminated. Only three, I think, two or three faculty members decided to leave the district. We, otherwise you're able to find another assignment for them within our district. And so that's been really important for us. We want to keep our teachers, our wonderfully talented teachers and staff and paras, all of them here in the district. Sometimes it's a little bit creative movement, but there have been certain things, like some coaches have been, some academic coach positions we don't have anymore, which we'd love to bring them back, but they're not the necessity like a teacher is in front of a classroom. We need those coaches to make sure that our students continue to do well and, and meeting their benchmarks for their grades and things. But we've, we had to make the decision and what we, our philosophy for budgeting is how can we move away from our, move away from the actual student so that that student doesn't feel the impact of any budget cuts we do? So how far away can we be from that student? So a coach is not a teacher, so that's not right in front and doesn't expand the, doesn't make your class size bigger like we were talking about. But yeah, we've, we've definitely had to make cuts and, you know, we'd love to be able to hire more of our, hire more people to come in and fill those positions, but right now, our budget just doesn't allow for it.
So a few years ago, we all experienced COVID.
Yeah.
And I know it was a challenge for the district. And I recall at the time that much of it was playing out nationally, was playing out in the schools. You know, we had some parents that wanted to wear masks, some parents didn't want to wear masks and so on. So, and we still have some COVID. So how is COVID playing out in schools today?
Yeah, you know, I mean, obviously we still have COVID. It's still, you know, I've got a couple of friends that are, that have COVID right now. So, you know, we still have to realize that it's still out there and we need to do our due diligence to wash our hands and, you know, all those things to make sure that we're, you know, not spreading it widely. But when you look at the educational piece, I read an article not that long ago, I think it was, said something like, some of our students could take six years to recover from what they, the COVID loss in education. And that just is, that's eye-opening, right? You know, you have students who started in kindergarten who are trying to learn via Zoom. I can't even comprehend that. You had, we had third graders and high school students who, high school students who are working on that every other day situation where they're going to school. So you're going here and you're going there. So it's had impacts. I think that we in the schools have taken the position and they understand what Dr. Campbell's leadership has been about moving forward. So you're in third grade, you're still going to learn third grade math, but we're going to try to fill those gaps that you might have had. And they're going to do it that way. So all right, let's keep us on track, but let's try to circle back and fill those gaps in as we go. And, but yeah, so educational, probably it's been a huge impact for the kids. I mean, we've got what now, I'd say, what, what are, how many years has it been? Four years? So we've got people from like third or fourth grade all the way through high school that have had some part of their experience impacted. We also see it in social, emotional too. We've got, we have the level anxiety of our students is through the roof. Would that have happened without COVID? Probably. I mean, we've got, I don't have it with me, but we've got those little things that we keep in our hands that we call phones that have, keep, that these students can't get away from issues in their lives. Like we could all go home from school and you could just be like, ugh, nobody can bother me, by bully can't bother me. I like to think we don't have bullies in the schools, but it's part of life, right? We have students who are going to be mean to each other, we have, it doesn't matter, you can be an adult and you're at a job, there are people that are going to be mean to each other, right? So these students can't get away from it. So that it just is, and then the level of what they should be doing, they see out there, you see people who are, I don't know, who are their age doing incredible things and and they're not. So, you're, you're, or they don't think they are, I should say, is probably better. But yeah, so anxiety, mental health issues are huge, but we've done a lot in the schools to provide, we've got some online resources that students and families can go to and staff. If there's a mental health need, that's immediate and they help them place them. We've got a relationship with Gosnold and others who will come into the schools and do sessions with our students. So, we are trying our best, but that has been a huge, huge ramification or, uh, from COVID.
So, we're taping this in September, 2024. Coincidentally, this weekend, I am hosting my 55th high school class reunion. And I grew up in Kingston, so it was Silver Lake.
Yep.
And at the time, we had a fairly limited vocational program. We had carpentry, we had mechanical, probably nothing close to what Plymouth has to offer.
Yeah.
And so, we had college-bound students. We had students in what they called the commercial course track rec. And then we had vocational. And, you know, as we plan our reunion, you know, there are people who have succeeded in every area, vocational, commercial, college. And so, for Plymouth, what's happening when students graduate? What's, are we, are we doing well with those that wanna go to college? Or those who want to go into the trades and have vocational?
Yeah.
Or those that wanna be in other areas? How are we doing at Plymouth? And what, what are we able to turn out?
Yeah, I think we are. I think we're doing great. We've got, the students are getting accepted to so many different schools. They're getting accepted into trades. They're continuing their, whatever it is, they're going to military or they're taking some time off to figure out their lives. You know, it's not, you're, I think so many times the students, our seniors think, oh my gosh, I'm 18, I need to figure out what I'm doing for the rest of my life. Now, that's, that's scary. I don't think any of us really know what we wanna do for the, our rest of our lives at any point, right? It could change at any moment. And so, I think we're doing a really great job by those students. We could always have more, we would, I wish we had more space in our, um, CCT vote tech programs. We, they're, they're capped based on, um, space, based on staffing levels. So, they have to be capped for safety. So, um, we can't accept everybody in. And are, they're working right now, which I think is really good, on, um, the standard at which, what we're looking to bring students in. Because the level of, um, gosh, uh, I'm trying to think of the words. What is it? The, uh, the requirements to get into, um, a vote tech program start when you're in like seventh grade is when they start looking at your grades and they look at your attendance and your behavior. And these are all things that come into play when you decide freshman year, you wanna try the, the exploratory program at, at South or you want a certain program at North. So, they're working right now to figure out how that, what that looks like so it's more equitable and fair to our students. Because what seventh grader is really thinking about what they're gonna do in, they're not, when they're in ninth grade or 10th grade, you know, so, uh, but we have so many wonderful programs for our students and you see them just taking it in whatever direction they want. And we've got a bunch of alumni who are back teaching in all of our programs that went through the, the, so I think that's really nice to see because they had such a great experience. They're coming back to give back. And that's everywhere. It's not just in our tech. I, you know, I feel like at opening day, we should ask all the alumni to stand up and it'd probably be half the, half the group, you know? Which speaks volumes for Plymouth.
Sure. And you mentioned requirements. Tell us a little bit, what's happening with MCAS?
Oh, God. So, you know, I've never been a fan of MCAS, to be honest, never a fan of standardized testing. I think that, um, it, high, high standards is great, but high stakes for our students is not. Uh, we, I think the one thing that MCAS did do for us is set standards across the board. It said, okay, if I'm in third grade here, this is what I'm gonna be learning in Plymouth or Kingston or whereham, wherever you might go, we have standards. We know what our students are capable of and what they're gonna do. But to take weeks out of our education of our students, to teach a lot to a test, I don't think, um, for me is not, I don't think a good use of our time in education. We've got, I just think about the teachers that I had that made some of the greatest impacts on me. I was lucky, I was the first year before, the last year before it counted. And I just think of the teachers that I had who just really had a passion for something and they shared it with us. And it may not have been directly in their curriculum, but we got to know about that passion. But what are those weeks of testing, testing doing to our teachers who aren't able to do that?
So, Michelle, you mentioned that you enjoyed playing track and also field hockey.
Yes.
And, uh, talk to us a little bit about sports in Plymouth schools.
Yeah, I think the sports in Plymouth schools have gotten so much better than when I was a student. I would say, I think I'm embarrassed to say our record in field hockey my senior year was like, one tie, the rest losses. We may have lost to Falmouth by like, like 14 to nothing. It was not pretty. But now, I mean, I, I think that, you know, sports aren't about winning. They've never been about winning to me. Because I still play field hockey. I hope, I'm hoping to play tonight with my team, um, playing at Starland. And it's, it's a lot of fun and it's about creating those relationships that you have forever. You know, I actually on my team is a, a, a woman that I played field hockey with at South, you know? So, we, it's about those relationships that are connected. I don't, and it's about the relationship with the coaches and the teams. It's not about the win, but wins are wonderful, right? But what I love most about what we've done in the Plymouth schools is our unified, um, program. I don't know if you've ever had a chance to go to like a unified basketball game or a track meet. I haven't been able to go to track, but I went to a basketball game and it is just the most heartwarming thing. You've got students who, um, have some sort of intellectual disability and they're working with their, they're the athletes and they're our partners. And the partners are helping them play that, play that sport. I mean, it's just, it's incredible. So, I think it's, sports just builds character and sports builds relationships. It's not about the wins.
I'm friendly with Anne Motika and Anne has been very involved in the Unified Games over the years as a former student who was an athlete and then a special needs teacher.
Yes.
And I've heard a lot of good things about the Unified Games.
So good. You've gotta go. You really do. It's, if there's a dry, if you leave with a dry eye, there's something wrong. It's heartwarming.
And, uh, so, what are some of the bright spots for Plymouth Public Schools going forward?
Gosh, there's so many bright spots. I mean, I think our students are obviously that bright spot. Our faculty, our, our teachers are bright spots. I, we've got, we are at that place and I think, you know, Dr. Mason, Dr. Campbell always say it, like, it's, we are a good district and we can always do better. We can always move ourselves forward, you know? We're really, our new strategic plan that we just put into action in June, I believe we voted on it. You know, we've gotta, uh, really focus on DEI, uh, which is really important. Making sure our students are ready for the world that they go into. Plymouth isn't exactly the most diverse community out there. And so, we want our students to be exposed to things that, no matter where they are, whether they spend their whole life here in Plymouth or they go to college somewhere or they move out of the state or country or join the army, that they are, um, they, they have an appreciation for everything that our, our society brings. Our study abroad, our study abroad, um, our, our exchange programs, there it is. Our exchange programs are such a great opportunity. And our, one thing that we always try to say on the school committee is we wanna make sure that people know that every student has a chance to go to these. They just need to speak up and say they need some help financially if they can't afford it. There are funds that can help students be part of those programs, whether it's Wushijigahama, our sister city, or it's with Plymouth UK, or it's Italy. We have so many different, whether it's a week or it's more, for these students to really get an opportunity to experience the world. I think that's a huge bright spot that we have. Gosh, you could go on and on for days.
So, I'm a member of one of the two Plymouth Rotary Clubs.
Yes.
And we have students come each week to our meeting to speak to us. And students have come to talk about exchanges. And it's really amazing what so many of these children have done, have accomplished and what they wanna do going forward. And one week, I remember there was also discussion from an athletic director for the schools about some of the offerings. And one that really hit me was swimming.
Yeah.
And the reason it hit me was because, like you said about you and track, I was not a distinguished athlete in high school.
Yeah.
I mean, I, for four years, I was on teams and they finally, I think, gave me my jacket because I helped.
That was me in track.
I helped fill the ranks. But the sport that I probably could have excelled in was swimming, but it wasn't really offered. I had to go to Bridgewater, uh, where I took a WSI course and, in order to get my, uh, badge as an instructor. But, you know, looking back on it, it would have been great to have had more offerings for those of us that might not have been traditional athletes, you know, not the football star or, or so on. And so, I know in Plymouth, you have many. I know, again, my friend Anne, uh, coaches a golf team. And I know there's swimming. So, uh, tell us about how you've been able to expand some of these things over the years.
Yeah, you know, I, I think swimming is probably five years back now, I wanna say. Uh, and that was the students. The students wanted it and they expressed an interest. They came to us, told us about it, that worked with the athletic directors and said, you know, this is how much we think it's gonna cost. And I remember them saying there'll be like 20 students tops. And then I remember seeing the like photos from their first meet. I think it was probably double that. And it was just nice to see, you know, these students may have not tried it otherwise. I mean, I know of at least one student who had never been involved, um, in swimming before and they joined and they were part of it. And, and so, we, we did just increase our athletic user fees this year. That was something that we had to do, hadn't been done in years, uh, to keep us more in line and also with the rising costs in transportation and just everything, we, we made the decision to do that. But yeah, our, we're lucky. We have golf and you've got, like you said, the football and you've got the track. And, you know, for athletes like me who are, just do it to keep themselves in shape for another sport. But we are really lucky to be able to offer those to our students because then it gives, there are students that get opportunities to go to college and play. I mean, I played a D3 and that was important to me because I immediately had friends and, and it just was, just a wonderful like growth opportunity. And like I said, sports are important, wins are great, but it's all about the growth that you do in sports for me.
So, we talked about bright spots. Now, tell us a little bit about what you see as a few of the challenges for Plymouth Public Schools going forward. Here we have in 2024, what is it gonna look like next year?
I mean, I think our biggest challenge this year, our FY25 budget was really difficult to kind of come together and make sure that we could fully fund our, our, our needs. But our FY26 budget is going to be even harder. I think anybody who looks and says it's not the case is living in a fantasy world I wish I could be with. Because we, we, we obviously are gonna have the impacts on our new co, union contracts for all of our units and they 100% deserve the pay raises they are going to get and that they need and to, in order to keep them. I mean, we were losing teachers and good teachers and people have been here for a long time. And so, we, we made that as a priority. So, that's gonna be, our budget is gonna be difficult. I think, I think anybody who looks at, uh, for us is space issues. So, we just had, we were lucky enough to have a visit from the Massachusetts School Building Authority looking at Hedge and Cold Spring. I think that was last week. And, um, looking at how we might be able to get a new bill, a new elementary school built. You know, last year, we put in our first request and we were denied, not because there wasn't need. There were just people, schools and towns above us that had greater need. And so, this year, we got put in again, we applied. And then we, um, we've made it to this next level where they came and looked at our buildings. And, you know, I was part of that, uh, tour that they did of both buildings. And you can see, it's, it's about educational equity across the district. If you, if you go to Hedge Elementary and it's the cutest thing and we love it and I just, you know, it'll be sad when, you know, it's no longer be able to be a school because it has generations of family who've gone through it and, and it's just such character. But they, one of the examples was they had a, a young boy have, uh, have knee surgery and he couldn't get to his, his classroom that was on the third floor. So, or the, or to the library, he couldn't bend his knee. So, how do you, that's not equitable. That this child then had to spend time with a, um, with a tutor, basically, or a, uh,
Card professional?
Yes, but, a sped director or sped, not sped, cheaper, a, um, special, um, gosh, what are they, they call it subs? There's my word, with a sub, that was fulfilling the, the teacher role for the student for a couple of weeks before he could go back to his classroom. And so, that's not fair. So, we're looking at those pieces too, which is, impacts the budget as well. And what does that look like, uh, moving forward? Because MSBA requirements and funding mechanisms have changed since we did South and North. But, so yeah, I think, I think those are our big issues and making sure, as you were saying before, that we can continue to have all of these programs that we offer so that our students can find their passion and what makes them want to come to school. You know, we've got that issue with attendance. Everybody does. We're doing better than some. But we have this issue with attendance, um, since COVID. Some parents and people and students are like, well, I didn't go to school during COVID, so why do I need to go now? And so, it's about realigning and reevaluating and reeducating. Our family is about not going on vacation in the middle of a semester because it's cheaper. Yes, it is cheaper. I'll give you that. But you take your kid out for two weeks. What does that do, uh, to that student and their progress moving forward? So, we've got, we've got a number of things, but I, um, and there's probably more. But a lot of it revolves around making sure our students are in the buildings, that it's equitable and that we have enough money to fully fund the needs of our students.
So, when you mentioned MSBA, it reminds us that although you're the Plymouth School Committee and we are the town of Plymouth,
Yes.
we don't operate alone.
No.
And in fact, I recall during COVID, that we were very much affected by what the State Department of Education would say in terms of certain policies.
Yeah.
So, tell us a little bit about what you do outside of Plymouth. I know that at times at Town Meeting, sometimes some school committee members are not there because they're off at
Conferences.
A conference. So, tell us a little bit about that.
Yeah, I mean, outside of that, you know, like I mentioned a little earlier, we have liaison to our, our legislative delegation so that if we have a concern or an issue, that person is usually the one to reach out. But, you know, any of us can reach out to, you know, if we have a personal relationship. Like I mentioned before, trying to get additional funding through bills on the, the state level. We've written letters to support, uh, you know, the full day, not full day, free breakfast, lunch and, breakfast and lunch. We've done that 'cause that is such an important thing that needs to continue and it's really changed, I think, a lot for our schools and a lot for our students. Uh, we are all members of Massachusetts Association of School Committees so that there's a conference every November that many of our members go to. And then there's this, the national, uh, conference that we always end up having to go. It's always Town Meeting Weekend. Uh, but we do have a policy that we can't have, um, you, if you're being, if you're real, going, getting reelected, you can't go. We've got some certain unwritten rules to make sure that, um, we, our money and that what we spend on going to these conferences are invested in our long term and not just like you're up for, if it's in April and you're up in May, you are not allowed to go to our national conference. But yeah, that's, that's kind of what we do and we're, we've got some members who are also on the Massachusetts School, uh, School Committee Association's, uh, Policy Committee and Legislative Committee. So, yeah, we try to kind of push our, we try to make sure that we're, we're staying on the pulse of what's happening.
And why would you have somebody on a legislative committee or as a liaison to legislative delegation? Why is that important?
It's really important that we have someone in a way to advocate for what we need. Again, that transportation we talked about before, that free and reduced lunch. Or like during COVID, we wrote those letters, we, you know, to let people know that we needed some more information or more backing, um, that we, that we can be part of the conversation too. So, we could be a resource so that if Representative Lenacha or Representative Moratori have a question, they know that they can talk to us because we have that dialogue. We've asked them, in the last few years, we've asked them, the three of them, or is it Senator Moran as well, to come at least twice, I think twice a year, uh, to give us legislative updates. So, we know what's happening. We can follow all that we want. But, you know, sometimes we don't have the greatest transparency in the state of Massachusetts legislator, so, legislature. So, it's important that we, we know what's happening and they're always willing to come and talk to us and, uh, let us know what we should, what we need to be, uh, aware of. And also, we then tell them what they need to be aware of. You know, I think a few years back, we talked about, um, McKinne Vento and the homeless transportation. And we talked about how there's money that comes out of the school budget that, um, when we do, when our nurses do put in for, oh my gosh, for payment for a certain thing that they might provide, that money goes back to the town. It doesn't go back to the schools. And so, we've done some of that education too. So, that's something if that comes up, they can say, oh, actually, this would make more sense. Why is it going to the town and not to the schools? I mean, I mean, it's semantic. If we need the money, the town has been wonderful and they will give it back to us. But it's just another added step that's not, not really necessary.
And earlier in the beginning, you talked about serving on the advocacy, uh, committee. So, how does that relate to all of this?
Yeah, so the advocacy helped put together the resolutions. We actually put four, six resolutions to the Massachusetts School Committee Association, that, for their annual meeting, which they then vote on them. I don't, I think we only got one of them through, but it's the first time that I've been on the committee that we've been able to get something on there, which is exciting. But they will then take up those at a, at their annual meeting. The, the entire body who is there will vote and hopefully one of that legislative, that resolution will become one of the things that they push in this legislative season, whenever they advocate for, uh, when they're on the Hill and they're advocating and they're talking, when they're on Beacon Hill. And then, uh, we've done things. So, uh, we've talked about our, there's always a controversy about, um, our reading curriculum and what that looks like. And so, we've had conversations about how do we, our ELA, that, what does that look like? And we bring that in and then we, we've then taken kind of a, an evaluating eye on it and asked it then to come in front of the whole board. And it's a way for us, it talked about, uh, funding of international field trips and how that worked. And, oh, we've, we are actually right now talking about, in the, in May, we increased our fees for buses. And while we did a lot of research, we did a lot of conversation. And while we did a lot of research, we did a lot of conversation about it, what never came up in any of our minds, which there's always an unintended consequence that you even if you think you've looked at it every single direction, there's something that pops out. And this one was, well, if I live near Federal Furnace, I don't have sidewalks. So how can my child walk to school? Or if I have sidewalks, there's only certain sidewalks during Indian Brook. So how do we better evaluate making you pay a certain amount to put your child on the bus because you choose that? But you're not choosing it. Your child just can't walk. So we've been having conversations about how we make that more equitable. So it's about issues that pop up and trying to we kind of triage it before it goes to the committee.
So, Michelle, you may know one of your predecessors, Adel, me and Freddie.
Yes.
Served on the school committee with me and then for many years she was the chair and she was very much involved in helping to create the Plymouth Education Foundation. Tell us a little bit about that.
We are lucky, oh my, to have the Plymouth Education Foundation. They are wonderful to support parts of our education that aren't supposed to be funded by the budget. They're very clear on that. They they're things that are outside of the typical budget and they have supported, gosh, what are those little bug the the I'm trying to remember what they had. But anyways, they've supported our math math curriculum. They've supported different nights that we've had, whether it's been a reading night at different schools. We are really, really lucky because there are things we wouldn't have been able to do otherwise. And with the Education Foundation and their gala that they usually have, I think it's now in the spring, right? It was it's been on on Town Meeting Day.
It was the same day as Town Meeting. We begged them not to do that again.
Oh, good, I hope. Because I think everyone was like, oh, no, we're going to go home and just throw on our dress and go or our suit or whatever. But they have done incredible work trying to build up a resource. I think what they're at one, they're a million now, I think, in their endowment, which is incredible. And so that's something that, you know, I try to make it a priority to make a gift at least once a year and to attend that event because they really are helping to supplement our education that we may not have been able to do otherwise.
Well, Michelle, as you may have gathered, education in Plymouth is very important. To me, it should be important to everyone. I mean, I got first involved when my children were very young. And now is still important. I've got four grandchildren and I look forward to hearing good things about education in Plymouth. And as we wind this up in the last few minutes, you've been doing now a school committee for many years. And this year, as we tape this year, also a candidate for state rep. So how does that relate to your years of service as a town official on the school committee? And why are you running?
Yeah, you know, so for me, it all goes back to why I decided to run for school committee in the first place. So I decided in twenty eleven to run. There were two open seats and I decided to give it a shot because the Plymouth Public Schools have given me so much. I was, as I said in the beginning, a struggling I struggled to read. I would say I'm probably an undiagnosed dyslexic. I mean, my Bs and my Ds are backwards and my last name is Badger. I mean, what does that mean? And there are just different things that I like struggled with as a child. And so I want to make someone else's life easier. I was then working at Suffolk University and I had students who would bring me their papers and none of them were for Plymouth. I like to like say that right off, but I was reading them and being like, oh, God, this paper really could do some work. You're a sophomore, like, all right. And I would sit down and just edit with them. And so I thought, you know, the position came open and I said, let me give it a shot. Let me see if I can, you know, give back to a community that gave me so much and hope find not there's there aren't students who are submitting papers like this. I mean, we're all going to submit a paper that's bad every now and again. But but for me, that's that is the truck or the crux of it. For me, I also live by a phrase I like to I say, I have a poster in my office at work and we rise by lifting others. You know, we are only as good as, you know, the people that we help. We need to make sure that we're helping everybody around us regardless for at least in my my view. A lot of people have poured into me over my time and it's I I view running for state rep, I view the work at for school committee that I do as pouring into other people and just giving people the tools that they need to live a successful life. And, you know, I for me, the schools are a microcosm of society. We have our we talked about mental health, we've talked about environmental issues, we've talked about building issues, we've, you know, public safety. We have all the issues that you look around and you see in our town, just at a different level with different difference. I mean, they're really not that big of a difference. We have family issues. We've got any number of things that come in front of the schools that are the same as state reps will be dealing with. The issues that I've seen have really just educated me on so many things that I've learned in the last thirteen years. And the other work that I do in our community through boards and committees, I've just made those connections and I think that will be really important too. I know our town, I know our select board, I know our planning board, you know, I I understand how the town government works and I have been working with our state legislators, like I said, almost from day one on being the committee on the committee. And so I really think that all of that tied in will make me a really great candidate for to be the first Plymouth District's state rep, hopefully November fifth.
Congratulations on
Thank you.
serving all these years on the school committee and on your candidacy as state rep. One last thing I like to ask people that I interview, when you're not serving on the school committee or working your job or running for state rep, what do you like to do in your spare time?
You know, I like to I love to read. I'm a reader. I haven't unfortunately read that many books this year, but love to read. I love to spend quality time with my family and friends, you know, take my I don't have any children of my own, but I have cousins who are like nieces and nephews and take them places and do fun things with them. And really just enjoy our beautiful community that we have. I have a ten year old Boston Terrier. Her name is Ellie and we love to go and go and walks in the woods and just really enjoy our we are really lucky because, you know, we've got so many, you can walk to the water, you can walk into up some, you know, into the woods, deep into the woods, into a pond, into the ocean, all kinds of things.